Only, excuse me, as a math teacher attempts to metaphor, treading water and keeping our heads afloat, but that we are making forward progress as we swim to meet Dr. Collins as he sails into Lenex. I wanted to make sure I was here in person tonight to say farewell and thanks to the outgoing members of the school committee. So I'm known as kind of this one large shell, but it's all good. I have worked closely with both Bob Munch and Bob Juan in my 10 years as president of the ELA, and I have appreciated Dr. Morrow's thoughtful presence on the committee as well. The institutional knowledge of this trio will be sorely missed on this committee. Their past commitment to this district is impressive, and I expect their involvement, while now front and center on the committee, will continue even as they exit their current roles. This is just Selena.
That's not me.
Special attention must be paid to Bob Juan. Quite simply, Bob is an institution, first serving as principal of Morris and then on this committee. I have sought Bob's counsel and have offered my own, sometimes unsolicited. He has given and received this counsel graciously and generously all by sharing whatever chocolate was on sale that evening. He led us through COVID and all the uncertainty that came with that. He always has had the best interest of the entire school committee in his gaze. School community, excuse me. As I look forward to leaving my position as president of the ELA at the end of the school year, I can only imagine that Bob has a sense of relief. Be a bittersweet. Thank you for many years of service to this district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Beautiful. Thank you, Mary. Thank you. Okay, correspondents. No, I have none. Your report. Minutes of April 10. Move to approve the minutes of April 10.
Time of second.
Any other questions, comments? Do you need that one? Okay.
All right.
Aye. Okay, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. I don't know how I could possibly buy that. But I'll try. And I'm not going to really rehash everything that I provided in the newsletter Thursday before break. So I just, again, appreciate what was said tonight, and I can't also thank Mary enough for being a partner with me over the last six months, but also the school committee genuinely involved, particularly for picking up the phone, stopping in the office, and really being nothing but positive support of this entire. And it's been truly a pleasure. I have served on a committee twice. I'm currently on the school committee, and I know how much work you all put in. There are people out there who think you're making a lot of money. Surprisingly, I've actually seen you do a lot of that. You put in an order amount of hours, both visibly in these public sessions, but less visibly behind the scenes, working out of club committees, slogging through policy, working on hiring processes, negotiating contracts, dealing with emergencies. And I can't thank you all enough, but particularly the three of our own members, Christine, Bob, and Bob. I think you invested a lot in this community, and you need to be committed. We ask our kids to act a particular way. We ask them to become citizens and contribute citizens. But the best way we can ask is to then turn and model. And we can model by actually engaging and stepping up when these roles are open. So thanks for that, for all of it.
You don't want to be scared of potential candidates. Right?
It's true. Well, it is work, but I tell you, it's really rewarding work. And it's rewarding work when you can see what's happening with the students. Just a couple reminders generally for the committee and the community. The 23-24 calendar is out, so just a reminder as you're planning. We appreciate that the committee approved that at the last meeting. Wanted to let the committee know that it wasn't my note, but we are meeting with Chief O'Brien this week and continuing to revise and update emergency plans just based on things that are happening nationally, but also thinking locally, how we want to improve the work that we're doing around emergency planning and modeling and grilling. Really excited. Mary and I started a conversation about assembling a professional development committee before Dr. Collins arrives, and so we're hoping to launch that in concert with some of the curriculum work we've started with the support of Brenda Kelly, who's here, and Anne Marie Agreed, who's at High School. You're seeing a lot of hiring activity, and I appreciate all the work that's coming into the hiring this time of year with both of our principals and our director of student services. A lot of work going on there in addition to the evaluation. Want to thank the community partners. We are next meeting this week. Amy Navisky holds that group together. Thank you, Amy. And we're meeting this week to talk about activities that have occurred this year in terms of reflecting what happened, but also beginning to build a plan for next year. Appreciate the committee's work on ongoing capital investments. Thanks for sending along the DRA report. I think that's a really great framework to be thinking about. There are big wins in capital planning, and then there are really impactful wins. So when I saw Brenda's newsletter this week, when she said, "We're getting whiteboards this summer," it was like the best news in the world, right? So we're very excited to do things that hopefully support our teachers, allow them to do their work more effectively, and also address their requests, right, as they ask, being able to do their work. There are an incredible number of events going on. As I said in the newsletter, do your best to get out and support the students, everyone who's listening. This is a great time of year to celebrate a year's worth of work in concerts and theater events and student dance and celebration and lots of athletic events, which agree by every day with the major. So just encourage folks to come out. And then two quick updates around hiring. Really happy to have Dr. Ames here. I named him as the next permanent principal for the Midland High School. I was able to speak with the faculty a week ago Thursday and really appreciated the opportunity to reflect on the process that got us to that point into each issue. We have big shoes to fill and lots of expectations, and I know he's already been working incredibly hard as he builds his team and really elevates, I think, communication and partnership in the high school. So very excited to welcome you permanently to the team. And I have a great update from Dr. Collins that it looks like he will officially be arriving here and starting in June 1. So I'm really excited for that. We've had some great exchanges. The last picture he sent me was they're moving in and out of the intercoastal waterway, but he was out in the ocean, and they actually ran within, I do have, an aircraft carrier, which is really cool. It's got, I think it was tiny and the aircraft carrier was huge. So I'm sure he's going to have some great stories to tell you all. But we're excited to have him start on the first. If all goes according to plan, based on weather and his travel plans. And then we'll do a couple days overlap, and then I'll get out of the way and let him serve as your leader. So and I will certainly be available to fill any gaps as things come up. But really excited to navigate the last month with y'all and again, pave the way for Dr. Collins. So that's it for my primary remarks.
Yeah, I mean, we don't look at it as a go-to matter of life. Earlier, Megan had sent something to you that was very well-written. We have been very impressed by the depth of preparation for every aspect of the work. Mary had alluded to it in her comments. We've been very impressed because you've not been a placeholder at all. You have been actively doing the work and keeping Lenex moving forward. It's been great. So I'll say something at town meeting too because the rest of the public who doesn't sit and watch this needs to hear that too. But you have been fantastic and continue to be. And I know right up to June 1st, beyond the necessary, you'll be getting a spread for the transition. So it's great.
Well, I made some lousy decisions in my life, but this was a really good. So I appreciate that. Thank you. So jumping forward to the pre-K and K enrollment, I know that both Brian and Brenda are here. But this is a very, very quick report update. We currently have 24 students registered for pre-K with eight returning and 16 new students. So that's a good, solid number. As you know, the pre-K, we have those couple-led students and typical students. We have a balance of those. So Brian and his staff are navigating registering penalties right now. So if you have any questions about that, I'm sure we'd be happy to answer those. Then I have an update at kindergarten, which is obviously an ongoing, moving target for Brenda. It appears that we have 37 resident students currently enrolled or will be enrolled. And our target is somewhere around 50, maybe slightly below that because we expect to pick up registrations between now and the start of school. So it turns out that we have 11 siblings in our choice pool. So if we enroll those 11 siblings, we're going to be right around 48, 49. So that's probably where we're going to land in this first round. And then what I will do, what probably Dr. Collins will do is provide you an update depending on how space plays out informed by Brenda, you know, post-June, if there are additional seats that are available. But I think we're in pretty good shape based on that number.
Can you remember, I'm trying to remember, but I can't, how does the 37 for the fall resident kindergarteners, how that compares to like this year and recent years?
It's on the high side of average.
It's very high. Yeah, we've been averaging 25 to 27 for a few years.
Yes, it's great.
And then it bumped up to 31, I think, this year. But 37 would be the highest.
Okay.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, that's great. I'm happy to hear it.
We see all these little kids around. They got time to school.
And out of the 37, 17 are pre-K students, which is great.
Yeah. So I think we're in good shape. I hope at the next meeting in mid-May that we'll have an update on the choice lottery for the Morris seats. And then I think we will be in good position in terms of where we stand for enrollment. And I'm sure Dr. Collins will have an update as the summer progresses. So that's basically the update on pre-K and K. Unless you have any other questions.
Just one question is, how big is the waitlist for pre-K? Did we have a significant?
We didn't set the very short list that actually they updated anything one for right now. So we took in, you know, we were able to take most of the people that came. There's always a few people that decide even want to stay to the screening and go through the whole process that they want to declare. Sometimes I don't find out all that until the summer shakes out.
Interesting, there will be 21 on one kindergarten. From the lottery, we filled this basis that we have just.
Yeah, so a quick preview of what you'll see in May is that we had just under 100 applications for school choice this year. I'm sorry, we had more than that. We have 98 students, minus 11 now, that gets us to 87, that are on waitlist. Will not be accepted based on where we stand right now and the seats available. So we have a lot more demand right now of these seats available. I'll give you the blow-by blow on the May meeting. Then the other update I have today is I provided just a very brief memo with the support of the principals on summer programming. I just wanted you all to have, you know, a quick snapshot of what we're going to be doing this summer. And so there are programs that focus on, that are supported by student services, Brian Kelly and his staff, including the pre-K 35 integrative, and that goes integrated with the Morris summer program, Brenda's and Life Skills, Extended Year Tutoring. Each of those are described. They occur between, you know, July, mid-July, and mid-August. And they're funded through a variety of grants, including the Extended School Year Grant and S. We're happy to offer those. Morris is also doing fifth grade academic reinforcement in the same timeframe. And a focus on both ELA and math. And then Jeremiah is launching a program in Concert with Lee, which is really exciting. To combine two school populations together and again, offering the intermission work in math and ELA for grades 6, 7, and 8. So I've given you really, really brief descriptions just so you have a sense of what's going on. But the principals are here and are director of student services this year. If you have any questions pertaining to the summer programming.
How is the staffing for those two programs?
Great. We're fully staffed.
Yeah, I just think we will have a staff for sure. The middle school, the VA, our staff that we're working with, we're working at the elite. We're both posting. Ideally, we hire one teacher from each district, but we're going to wait and see what we want to sort of compare.
So with that said, I am all set. Okay, so the next item in the agenda is to approve your policy in the name of sections. Unlike the last meeting, we never got them back. I checked my Dropbox today. Obviously, we never got them back. We reviewed them. And we actually had some comments on wonderful policies. I think it was KDC. You have that notes on KDC.
I have lots of notes.
I know you have lots of notes. And you may have notes on, but this is one, since Christine and I won't be here, just looking to see if it really was KDC. Yeah, it is K. I think KDC is Public Complaints About The Creative Ownment Instructor Materials. And MASCE recommends that we don't have this policy any longer. But this is one policy that I thought maybe the committee would want to discuss that, whether we wanted to have it or not. They recommended no. It was a whole process that if somebody complained about the creative ownership, this whole process could follow and so on. We just thought maybe the whole committee should talk about that one rather than just say no on it.
But we don't have it, right?
We have it.
You said it. Did I send an email that I?
So you covered it. You have it.
Okay.
Well, we have, our policy set in MASCE.
Right.
Harrison.
Right.
Which was, in this case, this particular policy was different, as Bob just explained. And, but, and we made a recommendation to MASCE that they just haven't sent back.
Okay.
The updated version, yeah.
So if I just unmute and ask you a second to the question, what you're saying is that might be something that we may want to have a more robust discussion before you decide whether you follow MASCE's recommendation or not? Is that why I apologize? I think, I thought you were saying, "Get ready now." And my insecurity is if I didn't do my homework.
No, you're not. I mean, I'm just wondering if, what might facilitate that is if I can type up. I was going to have a transition meeting with Megan anyway, but I can type up all my notes and explain about KDC. And then hopefully that will accomplish, you know, when you have the document in front of you, you won't have to remember every detail.
It seems like your point sort of also is that we're going to completely take a policy out rather than immensely there. We should have some debate and discussion about whether we do that before.
Yeah, there are some that we recommend that we not have that we did take out. But in this case, this just seemed like it was a lot of meat to this. We had it in our policy before. I have received complaints off and on in 40 years, not many. But they just recommended that we not have it. That people will, that new people, you know, won't complain.
Right.
But they just recommend you not have it.
Well, that was just me. My question is here. The recommendation is to not have any policy. What was, what is the implication of that? That it's just always handled that hot by the superintendent?
Or probably teacher, principal, superintendent, school committee, just same order that, you know.
But sort of more favoritized as you go along? Or that, like, would help? Would the superintendent establish his own policy instead? Or they were saying, "Best not to write anything down"?
They really didn't want to do that kind of detail with us. They just said, "Best not to add that policy." But that is the only one that I can recall from our discussion that I thought we might want to make particular note of.
Yeah, I think that's right. And I just have some notes for orientation purposes about some of the other changes in cases where there were differences between policy book and MASCE. But I'm happy to take that along.
Since we don't have anything in front of you, you know, we didn't get this up and down, we'll probably get it later.
But these are three sections. So I was absent at the last meeting, but I believe you have gone through A, B, C, D, even F. So next, in front of you will be sections H, negotiations, section K, community relations, and section L, education agency relations.
And one of them only has four policies in there.
Actually, yeah, two of them are a few pages.
And then perhaps, so do you expect that the preview will be, you said you're going to have a transition meeting.
We will.
So what might be helpful, maybe you're already, I'm sure you're probably already planning this, is to maybe have a list of the things that were flagged or being flagged for next season review. Like we talked about mission statement, things like that, just to highlight in for our new committee.
So there won't be any action? These did on early days tonight. So the next item was the 2023-2025 meeting schedule, which we thought we put together prior to the new committee, but with the idea that changes can still be made and a new committee selected. Essentially, hey, you might talk about it a little bit of just about how you put it together.
Basically, it's this year's calendar adjusted for next year's dates. We didn't change too much except we go back to the, on the budget. We went back to the, no, we left it. Did we move it backwards? We did move it. So this year, we pushed everything out a week later from what had been in the past. And on this calendar for next year, we moved that back, saying that it would be easier to postpone it again by a week than it would be to pull it forward and earlier by a week. So we did put it back on there to those discussions that historically taken place. And I think that one thing we added, Jake, was.
Performance indicators on the 23rd.
Yes, on the 23rd.
The idea is to try to create an arc in the year where you're working on, you know, your goal and sort of big-picture thinking. And then hopefully then equipping the principal with some targeted goals that would be reflected in their improvement plan. And then when they open the year, the teachers would be reflected in their goal. So there's, it's aligning from the school committee through, you know, classroom level. But then as you travel into the year, you also want to make sure that you're taking some time to look at your performance indicators. How are you doing? And so, you know, whether that's certainly a piece of that would be MCAS, but there's a lot of other indicators from benchmarking to graduation data, work that's on the school, and even some of the school climate survey data that you get through a convention assessment. I think that could be a really interesting and important exercise for the committee. And then that really then leads into the budget season where you're beginning to align your needs based on your data with your requests, right, your resource requests. So for me, it follows, and I appreciated the conversation that Amy, Veronica, and Bob had on sort of structuring this. There are a couple of retreats built in which give you all a chance to sort of dig into, you know, the goal setting and, you know, even revisiting the strategic plan, which I know Veronica's going to talk about in a minute with the TLC. But that's a really good opportunity to revisit that strategic plan. And the question, what progress were you making? Where are we? What do we want to focus on the coming year?
Then can I add one thing? Again, leading into the conversation, and it happened, I think, at your last meeting or the meeting before, was Bob pointing out that the way that, not that anybody's looking over our shoulder, but the way the state mandates of having our school improvement plans is the idea is instead of, we've been typically doing them this fall, is to work on them, and they get approved toward the end of the school year so that the summer professional development, hiring, work, et cetera, that happens through administration, as well as maybe work that we're doing for treat-wise, get you sort of ready. So one thought, it would be that we might have another part of our retreat in July, but we also are going to have some new members. So we did not put it on here. Maybe next meeting when we have our new members, we can talk about whether we want to put something in for July. The other thing that I put out as a thought would be to have some of our own internal training depending on where people feel like they would like more reinforcement. I know that we have the MASCE charter course, et cetera, et cetera. But I definitely think that at different times it's come up where different members have felt like we would like to dig in a little more to, you know, for example, how do we reinforce the goals? How do we move the goals forward? How do we do some of our work? And sometimes that happens at the MASCE conference in November. But again, if we could decide as part of either an earlier session in July, who's getting to know Bill, Dr. Collins, and then in August, and see if we want to incorporate a combination of training and some strategizing over the summer. So the July meeting, we didn't put there because I think we have to see, A, who are the people? When are we available? Do we want to do that? But we just want to put it all in August. It seems like we hit August 21st, 28th, and things are flying. So if we decide we want to try to do something in July, we'll get everybody together and talk about that.
So two comments related to those topics. We did put the school improvement plans for approval on September 11th meeting. Yeah. And as noted. And then we changed at the very end, June 10th meeting would include the superintendent's goals in cycle presentation, in the cycle presentation, but not the evaluation that typically happened in the last meeting in June. So we said that the evaluation of the superintendent would happen at a meeting in July. But that would be the next, or next disciple in school year. So it would have been on this calendar. But it's noted there.
And again, we had some feedback around the idea of doing the evaluations and the last time, some of us were new at it. And, you know, was being able to have that, the school improvement plan results, the superintendent's goals, and cycle presentation be the first sort of complete year with Dr. Collins. And then we'd be able to use that information to inform our evaluation websites, which seems to be a good follow-up as well.
Yeah, I know. The truth, I'm telling you, the evaluation of the superintendent, the goal was all through in June. Reality was that it really got done in June. So whatever. Okay, so this was just for information purposes. Okay, so this was just for information purposes. There's no vote needed on this, and um the new committee can figure out really what they're gonna do. But this, we thought it would be good to have this. I think that, once again, Jake's feedback on kind of the art of the whole thing was really, I think, extremely useful. That's the discussion we had last week. So. What's that? And subcommittees.
And as I mentioned, I'm very active about the policy mark.
Yeah. Human resources.
Human resources will cover an executive session.
Teaching, learning, culture, you had a meeting.
We're gonna have a follow-up meeting on the, on Thursday, the twenty-seventh, and the purpose of that is related to kind of look at all of the um identifying of the work that's been ongoing relative to these categories and the strategic plan and to really kind of goal and rank and think about a a more strategic document to bring to Dr. Collins as the onboard, so I think about. Um, and there were a couple of things on it that we'll we'll talk about in the meeting that were sort of like, this is in here, but how is it really gonna show up as a goal and where does it kind of fit? You know, what might we do with it? So that's the focus of the conversation on the twenty-seventh. Um, we've talked tentatively about meeting after that, but hopefully we'll get in so on the twenty-seventh that we won't need to do that until we convene our new board.
I think it has not been a finance subcommittee meeting recently and nor a school building committee meeting, but I did want to reiterate to the um members who will still be here that uh if if it's, if will the committee permit you continue on the school building committee on behalf of the board? Yeah, I don't make the decision tonight. Okay, so outgoing.
Um, sorry, one second. Can I just, so I I managed today quickly going through various agendas that happened at town hall to read the finance committee letter. In my research, yes, it really is, it just came out today. But I just want to say publicly, I really appreciate that the finance committee um really made it a point to appreciate the work and the collaboration that's been happening. I I'm kind of always a big proponent for the fact that the go-through process is pretty transparent, but we were asked to follow a different process and have a different conversation, and I really appreciate the finance committee of a body as well as our whole body in our debate. It seems like we've we've created a a nice um relationship around um financing our schools and around respect for the process and around accountability that I'm hoping we continue with. Um, we as everything when it comes to money, we're never always gonna agree on everything, but I think we'll engage in good productive dialogue and think about what's best for our students and for our town and our taxpayers. I think we're doing um our community really good service and modeling for our students. That, you know, good dialogue about anything is really important and we can do that. And I I very much appreciate the comments from the town finance subcommittee as well as the work of this finance committee. We're gonna give different meanings.
Yeah, well, thank you. I I haven't read that yet, so thank, thank you for for doing that. Okay, so we set this um part of the meeting up for some outgoing committee members for reflections, and so I'm gonna talk a little bit about my colleagues over here. So what characterized both Bob and you, you know, work on the committee is they're able to assess size issues, ask coaching questions, and then they can form decisions based on their understandings. Now, Bob, I've known since Jacob started school, eighteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen years ago, whenever it would have been. Followed by Deanna, didn't have a lizer in school, but I've since had the pleasure of knowing all of uh his and Joan's children, all highly engaging outgoing kids, which is a reflection, I think, on what you you like them done, raising them. Uh, Bob was first elected to the committee in two thousand fifteen, I believe, to fill the last couple of years of somebody's term. Is that who you?
All about.
Christine filled somebody's term. Bob was elected outright.
Well, he was elected outright, but I believe it was after Don Fitzgerald stepped the sign in two thousand thirteen, and it was it was so close that we didn't appoint somebody.
Okay.
So, so why? Because otherwise the numbers don't work in terms of three-year terms. So. Uh. He just stayed in a couple of rounds of unit A negotiations and maybe unit C on some.
Didn't do the same.
You didn't use C. I I didn't think so, but I wasn't sure. Was on at least one superintendent search committee and has been actively teaching and learning. Uh, he always paid attention to what's written in our policy manual. I was quick to point out at times when we were doing something that really our policy manual didn't, shouldn't allow us to do without at least some more thought. And and that's good because you kept us honest on that score. Um, he's been a thoughtful and measured voice in the committee, always wishing to be sure that each school's needs and asks are addressed. Um, doesn't gripe to judgment without a federal air in the top end. And Bob has contributed by work over the past few years, actually. Christine, first appointed in two thousand sixteen to fill this, the maximum release, maybe, maybe that's.
It was still running, I think, yeah.
It was still happening. Somebody left, maybe, maybe Mike. Um, and you've been elected twice since. Um, you and Clayton are raising two young boys who um undoubtedly have a rock climbing in their future. Um, you've led the government subcommittee for several years and have been guiding us toward the near completion of the N S, M A S C review. Um, and now we're gonna pass that on to Megan. Um, you were in superintendent search. Uh, you've been a thoughtful voice on the finance subcommittee. I think you're always prepared and insightful. You consider issues from all sides. And you make your decisions with the best interest of the students in mind. You spend your days with your company's forty thousand employees and your evenings with the seven of us, and we're the better for it. So thank you, Christine, for giving us these seven years on the committee.
All right, so I have the Johnsons. Bob, we could certainly talk about himself. He doesn't usually do that. And the difference between a forty- or fifty-year educator and a trial lawyer is that he writes things like that, and I say, yeah, I'm just gonna go with the evidence before us. So I'm just really going to do this a little bit uh off the cuff rather than really prepare to to express the wishes of myself and this committee um of gratitude and thank you to Bob, not just for his many years. So Bob, what's your task number? Two thousand and fourteen? Did you come on the committee thirty? See, I'm not a numbers person either. Um, to thank you for stepping up to be on the committee to help bring a perspective that both comes from your experience as an elementary educator, a parent who's raised kids of this community, has seen many, many iterations of discussions about how do we provide wonderful education in this, in this terrific town that we're in, but then also your years of experience of going into schools around the Commonwealth and I think in the region to try to help schools to um improve and schools that are really struggling, that are maybe not as fortunate to be as resource as we are. But the target is really how do we look at students and bring them to a place of learning? And the thing that most comes out to me when I think about our discussions and our meetings is is you bring it back to what do we know about what helps kids and what do we know about what helps all students to learn? Um, and you you've always been extremely thoughtful about bringing the conversation back to the core needs. Um, it's been such a pleasure. Your knowledge you have just a wealth of wisdom of both local, regional, state, and national, um just markers about how to create great education, how to take good care of kids, how to take good care of each other. And we definitely had some, you know, once in a century issues with the pandemic as well as other really sad occasions of how.
Sorry, and you bring, and you bring us together, you know, it's been really, really, really enjoyable. And I think I'm just in that moment because some community is still breathing, lots of our students, a student in particular, and um we have done that. We've come together, we've briefed graduates and students and people in this community and um people who've worked in our community through their careers, who have struggled and, you know, passed recently, and you just always bring it back to that sense of care that makes Lennox so special. Thank you.
Bobby, do you have anything you want to say?
I'll do, I'll do a little, a little shake. Um. The way I got into this, this, and I'm in town, sat in a few meetings, figured out I had no idea what was going on in education, because it's not my, not my people, right? I went to school, but I didn't really thought about what was behind you. Um, I found it fascinating. Um, Don Fitzgerald sort of tapped me on the shoulder one day and said, you know, if you play it forward, if you're really interested, play it forward, get involved, do something. Um, I'm very happy I did. I I found it very interesting. I learned a lot. Uh, finally, probably understood some of the tips that I went through as a, as a student. Um, I have nothing but great respect for all of the teachers of the M A A who work so hard. You know, I I see your covers down there taking places in different times. You're all doing a wonderful job. Um, that's where the work gets done. So thank you for all your hard effort. Um, you know, we try to keep things organized and people on track and put goals out, and the district is very good. It's very strong. Very excited to see what's coming up because I think with new administration in place. Um, and and new committee members, there's there's a chance for some real thing. And it's, it's, it's well, well-earned change. It's been a tough few years. Um, and I want to thank everybody. And one thing I've always really enjoyed is our ability to be um collaborative and work together. And the number of times I've said to people, if you're pointing out how much money you make, you gotta say, we're all volunteers. We do it because we're trying to make things better. Oh, I appreciate your feedback, but keep that in mind. Like, this is not, we're not here for any other reason than to try to make things better. We might not always get it right, but we're traveling. So if you're pointing about modeling, it's great modeling for everybody. If there's anybody out there that might be interested, it really is. It's a good experience, so. So thanks to everybody, Bob. It's been a pleasure working with you. Started every meeting separate from your M and Ms.
Yeah, we have M and Ms a few years now, but I tell you.
Yeah, sorry. Thanks to everybody. Good luck. And and don't be wrong about when they were, somebody lost the sound in order. Please, go for it. Not for my joke.
Somebody write that down. I thought you were gonna say somebody writing this.
And I hope Christine sets, she'd like to share that.
So I I approached Bob some time ago and said it it felt very important to me to somehow synthesize my thoughts in a, in a way about um the importance of a school committee that that I could uh make a statement tonight. And so I have written my statements, which I will read.
Oh, it's copies? I thought it was thirty-two things.
No.
I guess I remember that.
I did try to, but it's not selling me. It is double-sided, so I I do appreciate your for hanging in with me, but.
You'll appreciate it, Megan.
I I will try to get through this without crying, because I say that I am already not sure that I'm gonna say it. However, school committee reflections from a departing member. I'm a, I'm a person who loves learning. I am the proud recipient of several degrees from public schools and universities, and although I'm now middle-aged, I wouldn't necessarily rule out going back to school to pursue further education in the future. It is in the spirit of a love for learning that I joined the Lennox Public Schools School Committee seven years ago. Though not an educator myself, I hope my service has done justice to the memories of two among countless valued educators whose impact on me and the adult I am today was most indelible. The kindergarten teacher and K to A assistant superintendent, who were respectively my mother, Rebecca, and my cherished aunt Wendy. When I joined the committee in February twenty sixteen, I had a two-month-old baby. Today, I have a first grader and a kindergartner at Morris Elementary School. Over the past seven years, I've juggled my own and my husband's demanding careers, the needs of two very young children, whatever extended family illnesses and urgent situations presented themselves, the personal impacts of a global pandemic and other things I can scarcely remember since they passed by in a complete blur with committee and subcommittee meetings plus preparation work in between for the school committee. As for the school committee itself, this period has comprised high turnover in our administrative ranks, particularly in the superintendency, pockets of low enthusiasm for our school budget, albeit always followed by voter support, tough questions on how we handle bullying in our schools, and a years-long global pandemic during which for a time, every meeting seemed to become a flashpoint for the fears and frustrations of our community. It was a lot. However, I'd like to explain why it was worth it. I will try to define what is most special about the school committee. The topics we face may be difficult, though public perception and media depiction may be challenging at times. Though there will be differences of opinion among members, there is still something special and dare I say privileged about school committee work that transcends all of these factors. Very consistently, when I came home from meetings, even ones that extended late into a weekday evening after an already long workday, I had a strong sense that the time spent in committee was meaningful and purposeful. We were there for things that mattered. Upon reflection, it occurs to me that the explanation is that school committee is a place where a group of people comes together to apply care and concern to a cause that is bigger than any one individual, namely, public education. The school committee exists in a fortunate position of always holding in its sights what is so special about public education. Public education is one of our greatest societal goods, and with it comes a duty to attend to and honor its importance. In few other realms of life, do we have the chance to flatten what divides us, to bridge what separates us, and to meet all comers where they are, whatever their needs, whatever their station? Here is our bright shining chance to build up and fortify our young people, to teach them to see, to learn, and to think for themselves so that they may move forward, contribute, and shape the future. The school committee deals not in abstract concepts, but in real terms for living, learning students. Our highest values and aspirations for the future of our society are our currency. We don't just talk, theorize, or critique education, we apply it, and our students and our committed staff live and breathe what we apply every day. The school committee creates the conditions under which education exists and ideally thrives. I count it as a privilege that the school committee gets to put policy systems and structure into place to allow our students to learn and grow and ultimately to become, as my kids like to say, smarter than their parents. In my book, this means being open to the new, being willing to be challenged, being inquisitive and inclusive and respecting oneself and others. But how do we make our kids smarter than their parents? How do we create systems that bestow the learning, provide facilities that support our students, attract and retain caring and dedicated staff, choose leaders with the qualities necessary to guide our district forward, and realize the vision we have for our schools? I don't have a re-answer, but I know these are among the critical questions a school committee must grapple with to the best of its abilities. These questions never reach a finite resting place but must be answered and answered again in perpetuity. But that we get to respond to such questions is a true privilege indeed. I'll turn to another aspect that makes it all worthwhile. Our people like to recognize and express my my gratitude to many dedicated and talented people who are here every day because they care about our students and our schools. These people support our kids every single day. Our central office and building administrators and staff, our teachers and parent professionals, our school nurses, our food services staff, our bus drivers, our custodians, our special education department, our counselors, our interventionalists, our therapists, our coaches, and the many, many others who give their time to our students. These valued and capable people make our schools great. And of course, there's one final group to mention, the most important group of all, our students. The simple reason why we are all here. When I moved to Lennox in twenty fifteen, not yet a parent, I met some recent graduates of L M M H S, and I was struck by the qualities that I continue to see whenever I interact with our students at every event, every performance, every graduation. These are qualities I do not remember my, having myself as a participant, which is why they stand out so vividly. Among them are poise, self-possession, generosity, and the ability to care for themselves, coupled with concern for the community, sense of how they fit into the world, plus the confidence to move through it, ideas about how to make things better, and a curiosity to learn more. Our district is not perfect, but perfection is never the human condition. Lennox takes considerable pride in its schools and for good reason. We offer a great product. Our students are deserving of our best investments of time, funds, and attention. It is for them and because of them that I have served these past seven years. And why my family intends to make this town our home, at least until our children graduate from our public school. As a community, we will reap what we have sown. Our students are our collective future. The graduates of the Lennox Public Schools are young human beings we can rightfully be proud of. The gratitude I offer, my thanks for the opportunity to have served on the school committee. I appreciate your kind attention.
Thank you, Christine.
I I would just ask you, if you would be willing to send this in, you know, I think everyone should hear. It's really beautiful. Not happy for the time and attention you put into it. I think the whole point of public service is sometimes completely under, underappreciated.
Okay, um, so I first like tonight. Mary Cherry for her kind comments. Ronnie for your kind comments. Um, you know, Mary, there's never been a time in our relationship, you know, that I haven't really admired the work you told, could be L E A and the teachers and and all of them, you know. Um, you've been quite collaborative um in ways that have been very helpful for the district, so. But I'd like to thank the community who elected me as a position of the best yet. In my twenty-five years as a principal, I've worked with thirty-eight different school committee members. They included Tom Romeo, who served eight terms, Jay Highbury, who served six terms, Harold Stinchette Kocher, who served four terms, and a number of other people who served nine years uh or more. In my ten years on the committee, I've had the pleasure of working with fourteen members, including the stamina that's sitting here tonight. We all come together for the good excuse of the present and the future. We have meaningful, directed dialogue around a variety of issues. We're often asked to make critical decisions that impact our school community, and we do it because we care. We we work with top administrators, teachers, and great support personnel. We've had some shifting leadership um issues in the recent, in the superintendent's office recently, but we've been grateful for two interns, Bill Cameron and now Jake Everwine, who guided us through difficult times, who didn't need professionalism and integrity. It's now time for me to pass the gavel, and I know it'll be in good hands with those of you who are sitting here. Few things that I really have enjoyed over the years and will continue to enjoy as a community member, um, and also I'll continue to do this. Scholarship night is something that comes up on the first Thursday of June typically, or maybe second Thursday, it's right before graduation anyway. And you get to. And you get to, you get to appreciate what's being, you know, given for graduating students, the kind of end product of our system. Um, graduation itself is always a great event, and someone is going to be heavily privileged, you know, now of standing up there and shaking their hands of every child who goes through. Um, and, you know, that's, that's a wonderful opportunity. And then all the other performances that go on through the year. Those, um, the art shows, um, those are all, you know, whether you have a chance to go down and see the fifth grade moving up significantly for um, the art shows, sometimes at the library, sometimes at the rock museum, um. A lot of very impressive stuff, you know, comes from our, comes from our students. Uh, I'd like to thank all the administrators. This has been, this has been a tough year, you know, from June to, to December, let's say, November, December, um, you know, a lot of things were happening in the district, and um, several people came forward to help make it work. David's one, Tiffany's another, Jeremiah's another, um, David Hughes another, um. And everyone pulled together to ease the burden, you know, we, we as a school committee, you know, there's a lot of things we have to do, and, and as chairman, um, you know, you feel a lot of angst sometimes if things aren't working, um, and they aren't working the way you hope they were. Um, with, with the seven of us and the leadership that was provided, you know, we, we made it, we're here, and we have great things in store. So I'm happy to pass the gavel and say goodbye.
You can't pass it yet.
Well, yeah, I gotta ask, it's on fourteen million bucks. You know, yeah, I won't be done as of tonight, but this might be the last meeting, and it's. So, thank you all.
Thank you.
So now, going back to you again. We have a, we're anticipating having a short executive session. Um, we will not return to public meeting, but I believe there is a.
There's a plan to come back to this round of meetings.
Yeah, so not official business, but any kind of.
You all can hang for maybe ten minutes, we hope to have you back, if, if, if you can.
Will you make a secret or motion? Move go into executive session?
Yes, yeah, so, I need a motion for an executive session, so somebody can read that.
They have, I think, those, those. Not as, I believe that the adjourned executive session for the purpose of MGL chapter thirty A, section twenty-one eighty-three, discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining without the intention to return.
Possible work, I don't know.
On yes.
Bob, Bob, one challenge.
Christine, Mar, I. Megan Kirby, I.
Bob, one, I.
Robert, and I.
David, Lawrence.
Recording stopped.